This is Highway. It's Tuesday, April 3rd, 2012. Time is 6:04. Please turn off your cell phones and put them on silent, as I am doing now. Roll call, please.
Overfield.
Here.
James.
Here.
Jay. Gibler.
Here.
Kurtz. Langenhaim. Maxwell. McGinty. Michael. Mitchell. Moser. O'Connor. Petrie. Wilsonberry. Richards. Rosales. Strader. Wyble. Alex. Ammons. Anderson.
Does that happen?
Yes, I'm present. Stensel. Burksen. Betts. Carter. Covert. Esri. Here.
We have a quorum. Can I count 2.5? Do you have? Jay and Betts. Okay. Mr. Jay, can I make it tonight? Mr. Betts is -- will try to make the meeting. He is running late. If he does not make it, I will chair facilities. Seek approval of the minutes for the committee of the whole from March 6th, 2012. Moving, Mr. Langenhaim.
Second.
Second, by Mr. Carter. Discussion. See none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Seek approval of the agenda.
So moved.
But then, Mr. Rosales, second, by Mr. Kurtz. Discussion. See none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. All public participation. We just have a few tonight. Mr. Martell Miller.
Martell Miller, general delivery. I've got two things I'm going to talk about. And one, I was here at a meeting when they was asking me to have a minority set on a committee or a commission. And with, I guess, the jail commission or the committee, which one it ever is, don't know the name of it right now. I tried to get that answered. That'll be the second part of my question. But I wonder why, when she volunteered, why she ain't been appointed to that committee yet? And I'm asking the county board that. I was at a -- Sunday, I was at an ACL meeting. There was a county board member there. Mr. Betts had said on his committee, or a commission, or whatever the name is. And so, after the speakers got to speaking, Mr. Betts was standing in there. And I asked him. I said, "I just want to know the name of the committee, or what do you calling the jail? Since they don't have a name for it, and we don't know what it is." I asked him. He used the F-word with me in public loudly. The -- let me see what I -- I asked him about it, and he told me to get the F away from him. In a loud enough voice where she could heard it in that corner. And I said, "Mr. Betts, all I did was ask you a question. What is the name of this committee? So, when we come up here to address it to the county board, we know what to call it. Is it the committee? Is it a commission? Or what is it? Are they following the rules of the Open Meetings Act?" You know? That ain't what I wanted to know. I just want to know what you call the group that they have. So, and since y'all governing these people, and they're elected officials, how do we deal with when someone does that to a community member that helped elect other community officials, that he got the rights to use foul language in public? And it was embarrassing for me. And I didn't do nothing but ask him a question. And I wonder where he's at now, because I was going to ask him the same question and see if I got the same results, right here at the county board meeting. And that's my question to y'all. But we need to figure out, what are we going to do about this committee? Are we going to have a minority person sitting on it? Especially since minorities in the jail, and then the -- I don't see the state's attorney here. And when she called token minority, which I took that as like almost a racist statement. I thought we was out of that time of America, but I see that we still are, in certain people's eyes, that we are controlled. They feel black people could be controlled. No, we want to be part of the community. So, we got to pay part in the selection of what happened to us. If y'all going to have commissions or committees, we need to be part of that. She's just saying, "A token minority," and she was allowed to say that, and then none of the councilmen get up and say, "You know what? You're elected official." That should not come out your mouth. Especially in the position she sits in, as elected official, where she makes real decisions on people's life. And if she got any racist tendencies in her body, which I was part of her first election when she got elected, because she was running against pilot, things she told me she was going to do, she's not even committed to it. She says she's going to put more money into prevention. There's no more money coming to bench. We got a time right now with the court sent tax. We can do a whole lot with that court sent tax than build a jail. This community is hurting from a lot of social issues, and a lot of issues that was not taken care of by the government like y'all became before y'all, through a district five. You know? And that's city governments, that they got district one, and I don't know what's the district that Abana got, but minority community is the only community in Champagne County that's not growing like the other communities. Economically, we don't have a economic business on ours. So, when I grew up, we at least had popular street, which people called it a eyesore, but we did have businesses up through there. And on First Street, we had, like, cleaners and stuff on there. We don't have them things like that no more. And ain't nobody pushing for the minority community to grow. We pushing $20 million to build a jail, which we see this 60 to 80 percent of, it's always minorities. And it's up to the elected officials to look at our community and say it's a whole community, a whole county, and do something about that. Thank you.
Mr. Harold Charlo.
Hello. On behalf of the Preserve Olympian Farmland Group and the landowners up on North Lincoln Avenue, I'd like to read a letter to you that we sent today to Bill Gray in Urbana. As the lead agency for the Olympian Drive project, we thought imperative to bring to your attention a flaw in the design and engineering of the roundabout for this project. The Champagne County Board, over the last several months, has been discussing the inclusion of the roundabout for the intersection of Olympian Drive and Lincoln Avenue. During those discussions, the county engineer has stated that in developing the design for the roundabout, he visited a local landowner and farmer, James Heinberger. Based on the visit, a template was developed that became the basis for the design and engineering of the roundabout. It seems impossible that an intersection for a road that will cost the taxpayers more than $20 million could be based on the farm equipment of one person. The problem is that Mr. Heinberger is not the only farmer who will be using this intersection, and in fact, he is retired. Would it not have been more prudent to contact a local farm implement dealer or the Champagne County Farm Bureau to determine what size equipment is presently being used and what the future might hold? Our research shows that larger equipment than the template already exists, and in fact, Bill Ziegler, the person who farms the land on either side of the proposed highway, already owns equipment that makes it impossible for him to navigate the proposed roundabout. For Mr. Ziegler, it will mean a five-mile drive around the roundabout in order to access the other half of the field lying only a few hundred yards away. If new, larger, and more efficient equipment becomes available, he will be unable to take advantage of it. In the future, any farmer wishing to bring their equipment from the west side of the railroad tracks to the east side will not be able to use Olympian Drive. Since this intersection will be in use for at least the next 50 years, we urge your earliest review of this situation so that the design and engineering of this intersection looks to the future and not to the past. Thank you.
Mr. Norman Stensel.
I'd like to say a few words in respect to the update on the Lisa that you'll consider transmitting to ZV8 this evening. I attended virtually all of the update committee meetings, except one, and provided various comments along the way, most of which were ignored. And I must say, however, that the committee worked very hard, and staff worked very hard. But the work is not finished. What has been produced at this time is an instrument that has not actually been tested. In the materials that you have, you'll see that there were 15 test sites. But the instrument itself was not completed until almost the very last minute. And no information that I have seen indicates that the completed instrument was tried out in any significant way. Those 15 sites existed throughout the process, and what is needed actually is a new examination of sites using that instrument compared to the old instrument. And so, I proposed, and propose to you, to consider a continued test of this instrument against new sites. Sites that come up for review, so that you have the old instrument compared to the new instrument, and to examine the issue of validity and reliability. Jargon words. But validity means that it does what it is supposed to do. And reliability means that it does it consistently. Now, what is it supposed to do? Federal law says that it's supposed to preserve prime farmland. Not super prime, just super prime farmland, but prime farmland. And it is supposed to promote the viability of the agricultural enterprise. Not only the farmer that owns the land, if a farmer indeed owns the land, but neighborhood farmers, too. The instrument doesn't do either of those things, and we should check to see what it actually does in an extended trial. Thank you.
Mr. Jeremy Baumberger.
Eight o'clock this morning. An article on the two extra legislative bodies I've been addressing before this board since their inception was published on the News Gazette's website. It included an overview of Deputy Chairman Richard's Advisory Task Force, which, despite its constitution three weeks ago, has, to my knowledge, not yet had a meeting. It also included Board Chair Pious Wyble's confirmation that Board Member Carol Ammons would be appointed to the project planning team. I must confess, I found his comments exceedingly troubling. He said, "Ammons' appointment won't go to the county board for a while. It's too late to get it on tonight's agenda, and I won't be at the next committee of the whole meeting, and really, they're not doing anything for a while anyway." Now, I would like to remind the board that the Justice -- and at the Justice and Social Services meeting on February 14th, Stan James asked if the members of the task force would be approved by the board. And Wyble explained to him that, "No. Like the planning team, the task force would not, could not issue binding opinions." And so, only Deputy Chair Richard's approval was required to establish its membership. We can also go back to February 7th, when, as I have stated time and again, the membership of the project planning team was appointed directly by Deputy Chair Tom Betts, without any input or approval from this board. These precedents, set by Mr. Betts and Mr. Wyble, illustrate clearly that any delay in the appointment of a representative from a minority-influenced district cannot be attributed to any established legislative or administrative procedure defined in the county board rules. Furthermore, I would like to dispute Mr. Wyble's assertion that they're really not doing anything for a while anyway, by pointing out that the RFP was issued on March 9th, and that since then, we can presume that the sheriff's office has been receiving proposals for needs assessment services, which the project planning team, we can presume, has been reviewing and discussing. Any such review or discussion has taken place without input from Champagne's minority community. Only Tom Betts and Pious Wyble bear responsibility for the fact that nearly a month after this board mandated the diversification of the project planning team, no appointment has been made. The absence of such an appointment on the agenda is also their responsibility. The notion that this appointment requires further board approval is simply incorrect and completely unsupported. However, this misconception does highlight an important element of the planning process around the jail issue, which I've noticed previously in these chambers. The creation and operations of both the planning team and the task force has thus far taken place entirely outside of the county board rules. Excuse me. This board adopted these rules almost two years ago as a resolution which was supposed to define the mechanisms by which this governmental body is to operate. Mr. Betts and Mr. Wyble have placed themselves, as well as any groups they decide to create, entirely outside of the law. The project planning team continues to refuse to allow the open meetings, to follow the Open Meetings Act, and therefore remains unaccountable to the public, as well as to this board, as it moves into the evaluation and shortlisting of responses to the RFP. Personally, I can't imagine why the board would tolerate this kind of behavior, and I urge you to demand transparency in the operations of the Champagne County government, as well as genuine oversight of the project planning team. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Deb Greyst, you signed up here. We'll wait until we actually discuss the item. You can talk then. Is there any other public participation? Please come forward. Mr. Chris Evans.
Thank you. I'm Chris Evans, District 8, and I spent a couple days now preparing some comments for tonight, and to be honest with you, I really don't know what to tell you, other than your, this $22 million maximum security jail expansion is a bit of a disappointment. I want the same thing that y'all want, and that is a reduction in crime. But I know it seems counterintuitive for me to tell you this, but I really have looked at this sort of thing a long, a long time, about 20 years. I've been to the courthouse a lot. I was there today, Stan. One of your constituents was up for, came out crying from the courtroom because his lawyer won't do what he's asking him to do. He didn't do it. He looks out at Ran Tool meets. He's losing everything. I mentioned last week that, or last, two weeks ago, that you're responsible for the amount of, the quality of the criminal defense in our county. It's important to have criminal defense. If you were arrested by a police officer, they don't get it right every time. They're human. 8,400 police reports were reviewed in this county in 2011. It's on your, in your RSP. Only 4,192 prosecutions. They just dismiss half the prosecutions. So, they're not, either the state's attorney is not prosecuting valid accusations, or the cops are getting it wrong, but nonetheless, people are getting dragged to the jail and then turned loose, half the time. It's important to have adequate representation. It's actually constitutionally required. So, I really, I'm surprised that we're not looking, as we look at needs, it's not a Lego project. We need more cells for the mentally ill. Mike, are you kidding me? You're going to put people, mentally ill people in a jail? Why aren't we putting them, why aren't we building a hospital, if that's the reason to build a jail? We've got to, we really, to get a reduction of crime, we got to go at the root. Why things are happening? Why are people selling drugs? Why are they unemployed? Why is their families in a mess? Why are guys beating their wives? Why? And start to address those issues, rather than make, create a system to make money off it. Some people are guilty, and they need intervention, and they need to be taken off the street. I'm not here telling you that we don't need law enforcement, and we don't need a 911 system for emergencies. I'm not here to tell you that. I'm not telling you that we are needing to, you know, go easy on bad behavior. I'm not saying that at all. We want accountability for behavior, and the kind of prosecutions and the kind of sentencing that we're getting for the smallest, most -- go to the courthouse sometime, really. Go to the courthouse and just talk to the people that are there. They're coming out of the courtrooms, and hear their stories. I, a guy got his third revocation, he drove on his license for the third time on a revocation license. I know I'm running out of time, but he, hear the story out. And his prior two convictions were '91 and '92. He has a four-year-old now, and the best the criminal justice system could do was two years in jail. I mean, that's so expensive to us taxpayers. We just want to develop systems that make people stop doing what they're doing, and then also make sure that people get the help they need. I know it's hard to see that, and I know that, I hope we have a large, big conversation, a long conversation, on how we can best use the precious tax dollars to do something effective. I'm not against law enforcement. We need it. Of course, we need it. But we want to be smart about this. And $22 million, just to give it to an architect, to build us some cells, it's not going to work. It's not going to get us where we want to go. And I challenge you to walk around that downtown jail. Just walk around it, and you look at it and say, "We have to throw this away? It needs to be demolished?" It's a waste. That is a total waste. We were required by law to maintain that thing. We shouldn't have let it go. So, be smart. You know, really take a good, hard look at this. I know we've all been arguing with each other about everything, and it's gotten kind of sensitive, but the reason why we need Carol on that jail planning team is because a minority voice needs to be on there, because this affects minorities 60% of the time every day, if not 80% of the time every day. Don't know why, but we can look into that. But she needs to be on there to take a look at this, because this affects, what you're doing is affecting the black community greatly. Now, whether you care about that or not, I don't know. It's, I'm not accusing you of anything, but it really, it affects poor people 100% of the time. And when you go to jail, you lose your job. Your car's impounded. It's a mess. You got to find a lawyer. If you can't, you got to go with a lawyer that is way too busy. They're handling 60 to 50 cases a month. ABA standards is 150 a year to handle a case effectively. They're handling 400 a pop a year.
Mr. Evans, wrap it up.
Appreciate the time, Chairman, and I appreciate your time. I know it's, I hope we had a lot more conversations about this, and I appreciate your service. I know it's difficult, and thanks again.
Is there further public participation? See none, we'll close that, go on to communications. I have a couple here. First is, there's a form you need to fill out every year if you're elected official. You may have gotten it in mail. I got mine yesterday from the county clerk. It's a yellow forum. We have photo copies of it up here if you want one. You can pick it up afterwards. It has to be filed by May 1st. The other item is that C.D. Lloyd did come in and work on the sound system here, so it should be better. Not perfect, but it should be better. Other communications. Ms. Petrie.
Yes, this is for the general public to let them know that Ms. Bucie has arranged for the online application for those interested in applying to serve on the Local Food Policy Council. The deadline for the application is the 27th of April, and the formal appointment will be made at the suggestion of Chair Wyble at the county board meeting on the 24th of May.
Other communications. All right. Let's move on to county facilities. Again, Mr. Betts is not here, and me, there's Mr. Jay, so if there's an objection, I'll chair this portion.
Objection.
Any real objections? The physical plan monthly reports, you should have them at your desk. If you have any questions, Mr. Reinhardt, you can talk to me. Bottom, any comments, Mr. Reinhardt?
No comments, no. Just, any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
I assume we're spending less on, our heating costs are significantly lower this year?
Yes, so far, we are significantly lower than last year. Hopefully, next month, I will go have a analysis of the first quarter of this year for us, now that we have first three months' worth of data we could put together for us.
Okay, Ms. Ammons?
Yes, I see expenditures on this list for the satellite and the downtown jail. I like to get, and you can email this to me, or any other board member who might be interested, in what those figures represent, what repairs were done with, that, for those costs, what those costs represent.
Certainly.
Do you have a, actually, off the top of your head, do you have any idea what those are?
No.
Okay.
Nothing, nothing major significance at this time. Just general maintenance, but I'll give you some detailed information.
All right. Ms. Petrie.
This isn't specific to the items, but it is general and applies to these items. I know that you are working on, or have plans to work on, a overall comprehensive maintenance plan for all of the county buildings. At a future meeting, would you please let us know how that's progressing?
I certainly will.
Thank you.
Ms. Burksen, you have a question? Microphone.
If he's emailing about those repairs, he could email it to all of us.
Whoever would like him.
Just send it to me outside the county board.
Certainly.
Any other questions on this item? Okay, the motion except places on file. Mr. DeQuisenberry, second, Mr. James, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. 202 Art Bartel construction report, monthly report.
Okay, on page 14 is the 202 South Art Bartel Road Destruction Project spreadsheet showing no activity in any light item, with the exception of the East Campus Stormwater Project for partial payments for engineering services, with a remaining entire fund balance of $437,165.31.
Can you say that effectively, all the work is done at the place, except for the stormwater, as of today, maybe?
Yes.
You still need to build for a few items, but all the work has been done?
All work has been completed, and billing is, has been complete on all line items except for the East Campus Stormwater Project. So, all funds left in there are funds left available for this committee's use.
Okay. Any questions on this, on the side of Mr. Evans?
Just one. How are we doing on that contingency? Have we had to draw down the contingency at this point?
No, we have not, at this time.
Good. Thank you.
Ms. Petrie.
Could you explain what the $17,000 on the Bartel Stormwater was for?
There was a, for the, are you talking about the $17,102?
Yes.
Okay. That particular line item was for the, was listed as a maintenance area built out in the new building. In fact, it was the, what the maintenance, we needed to hook up the maintenance equipment into the new building when we relocated from.
Excuse me, I think, aren't you talking about the 17096?
Payments this month.
Ms. Petrie.
I'm talking about the East Campus Site Stormwater.
Oh, I'm sorry. I've seen the wrong number.
Oh, okay. But they were similar numbers, so I understand.
That payment, the 17096, was a payment, a partial payment to Burns, Clancy Associates for the engineering services up to date.
Other questions? Mr. Reinhardt on this item. So, motion except places on file. Mr. Kurtz, seconded by Mr. Esri, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next is the recommendation for word of contract for East Campus Stormwater project in pages 15 and 17.
Okay, on page 15 is our board action worksheet, supplied for your information. Proposals were received, open and read on March 27th, as scheduled. Eight proposals were received.
Eight proposals were received. Central Illinois Tile, Cross Construction, Deuce Construction, Foods Contractor, O'Neill Brothers, Schaumburg and Schaumburg, Stark Excavating, and TNT Contracting all submitted The evaluation committee met and reviewed the bid tabulation sheet and a unit price comparison sheet for the committee's review. The evaluation committee, of course, consisted of John J., Gary Maxwell, Deb Bucy, Jeff Blue, Tom Burns, and Chris Billings from BCA and myself. Our engineers' opinion of probable construction cost they created during the construction document phase for the CMP arch pipe base bid for this project was valued at $396,460. And their estimate for the alternate bid for the pre-cast concrete box culvert was for $457,960. The three lowest bids received for the base bid were below their construction estimate, this value, with the lowest apparent bidder being Cross Construction with a base bid of $375,000. And the alternate bid at $439,575. And of course, we have attached the bid tabulation sheets for your... Showing all proposals and their prices. With the 202 Art Bartel Road Construction Project budget we just reviewed, it was listed on page 14, it shows a total of valuable funds of the $437,165. All other items have been completed, as we stated before. The evaluation committee unanimously selected Cross Construction as the most responsive and responsible proposal. So the next... Page 16, we can show a small spreadsheet showing the total available funds left in the budget, $437,165. The remaining expenses for BCA as per our contract that we have signed them of $21,803. The apparent low bidder, which was Cross Construction for $375,000, which would leave us a balance of $40,361 available in that total budget. If we assume we standard 10% construction contingency, excuse me, leaves us just a small balance of $2,861 left if, in fact, we accept the apparent low bidder's price. So with that, the recommendation was for the Stormwater Improvement Project Proposal Evaluation Committee recommends the word of cross... Of contract to Cross Construction for the installation of the CMP arch pipe with a value of $375,000.
Is there a motion on the floor? Mr. Mitchell makes the motion. Mr. Lagenheim seconds it. Discussion on the item. Mr. Allen.
We have a representative from Burns, Clancy here. Will we be able to ask questions, sir?
Certainly.
Anybody?
Oh, there is. Mr. Billings?
Yes.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. This is obviously just the fee to the subcontractor. Does this $21,803 in remaining BCA expenses that was listed in the original project budget, is it your understanding that that'll cover the work that BCA will be doing as far as construction and engineering?
That's correct.
And BCA will be the project engineer, right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Can you speak to this decision to use... Here, to this recommendation, to use the galvanized culvert as opposed to the concrete culvert? I mean, obviously, we're doing it for cost savings, so we'd like to hear some indication that this is not, you know, penny-wise and pound-foolish.
Well, it's not penny-wise and pound-foolish. We have used this... It's aluminized steel pipe, and we have used this...
I apologize.
Yeah. Well, it's slightly different than galvanized.
Looks like galvanized.
It does look like galvanized steel. But we have used that in projects here in Champaign-Urbana. Now, I think probably our first installation here in town was on the order of 19 years ago or something like that. So it's a product that's been around for some, I don't know, 75, 80 years, maybe a little longer, but it's the aluminized steel. The galvanized steel metal pipe and stuff's been around a very long time. And the aluminized steel has a very good track record as far as its long life. I know that's probably what the main concern you have is the longevity of the installation.
That's correct. I mean, for $50,000 additional dollars, if we have to dig this thing up in 30 years as opposed to 50 years...
Well, it's not likely that you'd have to dig it up in either 30 or 50 years. The lifespan is beyond that. Those pipes are continuously checked and tested by the manufacturers, and they take cores of pipes that have been installed in the ground 30 years, 50 years, 70 years, or something like that, and test them, and then try to make an estimation about how much more life they have in them. And so far, so far, the testing that's gone on in the industry now for 40 years or plus on the testing has indicated that lifespan on this type of material is going to be well in the 100-year range right now.
So in your professional engineer's opinion, you believe that this is an appropriate material to use in the project?
That's right, and we wouldn't have recommended this alternative or this approach, this material, if we didn't think it wasn't acceptable and appropriate use in this case.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Questions from Mr. Billings? Ms. Petrie?
I have three information questions, and either of you to answer them, whoever's appropriate. First to the bids, the range of the bids always raises a flag for me in relationship to our obligation to take the lowest bid when the highest bid was almost $100,000 more. So I'm always concerned that the lowest bid may not do us well over this 50-year span if you amortize the cost over that span. So would either or both of you talk about this huge range of cost in these bids?
Well, that's not actually an unusual distribution for the... You had eight bidders, and I think eight, you know, very good contractors. You had eight bidders out of, I think, 12 contractors had plans out. You have half of those, you had four of those, which were very tightly close together down at the bottom, three of them being a little bit below what our engineers estimate, one being just slightly above. But you have half of the bids there, very tightly grouped together within a $25,000, $30,000 range on a project this size. So I think that means that all of those bidders, I think they all understood the project very well. You have very competitive bids there. It's not unusual, then, to have a larger distribution in what we call outliers in there. You never know, a contractor maybe didn't spend as much time putting a bid together, tracking down all the details. Maybe he was in the running for four other projects and didn't want to bid anything too close. I mean, you never know what's in the minds of these contractors, which is why you go ahead and take the projects to bid. Looking at the bids, the eight bids that you got, that you received, I think that was a very reasonable and customary distribution of bids, and it's almost every project you get these outliers out there that, for whatever reason, they might not have turned... I mean, the four bidders that didn't turn in the bid that had plans might have given you a number even larger than that, but they just didn't, you know, bother to bid. So it's not unusual.
Okay. My second information question. I don't know these contractors well, so are any of these minority contractors?
I don't believe... I don't believe any of them are specifically minority contractors of... There's one or two that I don't have great familiarity with. The rest are, you know, essentially local contractors that do work, that are here or do work here all the time. And to my knowledge, those aren't, you know, certified minority contractors.
Right, thank you. And then my last question is, this is county taxpayer money, and I'd like to see the... As much of this money stay within the county. What's the possibility of including in the contract with the firm that the county board decides to approve that 20% of those people hired on the project are from the county?
I don't think we can do that because that's not part of the bidding, not part of the RFP. We would have to have a policy on that and do that ahead of time. We can't do that now.
Okay, now I've learned that.
I assume that Cross Construction is... I think they're based out of Urbana. So my assumption is that people who work for them are... Live in the county.
No, that's not necessarily the case.
Well, sure, it's not necessarily true, but I think that most likely they do. They've been around for a number of years.
Okay, thank you.
I also point out that we do not have to take the lowest bid. We're not obligated to take the lowest bid. Mr. James, you have a question?
A couple of comments on Patsy's and what the gentleman said. When I've done bidding before, there'll be a range of quotes. Some of them will be real tight, some of them will be outlandishly low, and just because they're that way, maybe they're hungrier, and they want to keep their men working, and they'll take a lower profit margin. So you can't always just judge that, whether, you know, the old saying is perception. If I had a car and I told you I wanted $50,000, you'd think I was half off my rocker, but if I told you I wanted $5,000, you'd say, "What the heck's wrong with it?" So sometimes it's the work and the overall record. And then, secondly, on putting stipulations such as what you talked about, 20% from the county, when I worked for HUD and we would do such things, the problem there was that we're putting the onus on the contractor, and then when those folks don't show up for work, or if they get hurt, it's not on the back of the county, it's on them. And I just feel like sometimes we shouldn't tread on people that know what they're doing.
Ms. Allens?
I just wanted one question about the range of the bidders, the bidders. They all bided the same type of equipment that we wanted. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, House Courthouse Sound System Project Update.
Okay, on page 18 of your agenda is the... A copy of the Certificate of Substantial Completion that we gave to C.V. Lloyd for their completion of the courthouse sound and video enraignment system. We did have a walkthrough. They supplied us with all required documents, and we are in the process now of finalizing the closeout paperwork to finish this project up. And attached on page 19 is a letter from the presiding judge commending the work that C.V. Lloyd did during this project for your information.
Any questions on either of those? Mr. Allen?
Allen, can you confirm for me? I think I know the answer, but can you confirm that Bob Philippi did review all the documentation that we got from him?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Quisenberry?
I have one more question, Allen. Were we able to acquire uninterrupted power supplies and make sure all of the equipment that we were concerned about has clean power?
Yes, we did. We added, as requested and recommended, we did add some power filtering equipment, small UPSs, to the racks up in the third floor of the courthouse to maintain and protect the new equipment that was installed there.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else on this? All right, next is new bike racks for Brookins Administration Center. This is a... For FYI. Rita, could you answer any questions on this? Any questions on the bicycle racks? I have one.
Would they fit your scooter?
I don't have a scooter. It's a tough question. Do you know what color they're going to be?
Black.
Okay. Black. And they're going to be on that side, your side of the building, I guess, and some back, or...
Yes. Four will be by the gym.
By the gym, okay.
Yeah, and the other six would be by the main entrance.
Okay, very good. So that means all of us should start riding our bikes.
Yes.
Question, sir?
This may be in here, and maybe I didn't read it enough, but what happens to the old racks?
I don't know.
Mr. Reinhardt?
We will see if we can donate them to anyone who would like them, and if we can't find anyone to donate them or to accept them, then...
Recycle them.
We will probably recycle, yes.
All right, thank you, Rita. Okay, consented...
There was a question during caucus. Is there any cost to the county for this?
No.
Then thank you very much.
I assume there'd be some insulation costs or...
We'd be paying for that.
Oh, very good, okay. Okay. Is there any... There's no chairs report. Any other business? Ms. Allens?
I appreciate those in the public participation. I didn't see the News Gazette article, and I had not seen Mr. Wyble's comments either. So I was taken a little bit by surprise because I emailed to the chair asking about the status of the jail planning team and did not get a clear answer on that. So certainly, I appreciate the news, getting to the news, but I think that one of the problems with the process is the process itself, and that there is no clarity on exactly what is being done, when it's being done. And I think that a little, small bit of courtesy certainly would have been to inform me so that I didn't know by News Gazette means this morning.
Well, I told you directly, I will sign it to that task force team in the near future, and I believe I told the News Gazette the same thing.
Not me, that Anderson...
Well, that's what my email, you said that, and I said the same thing to Mr. Kasek. Would you agree it's what I said in your future? I didn't say when. And I can tell you how we do it at the county board meeting this month. So therefore, everybody gets the same information, same time. Any other business? Okay, consent agenda, I think it's just item B2. All right, next up is Eloc, Mr. Kurtz.
It's a beautiful plan there. I want to welcome back Brendan. It's good to see you back, Brendan. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to Eloc, and we'll start with issue item A. I request to authorize Chris's application for public transportation assistance grants for operating and rolling stock capital under the Illinois Department of Transportation's authority on consolidated vehicle procurements, job access, reverse commute, and new freedom. May I have a motion?
Obey.
Stan first, Jeff second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to offer a motion, have a motion from the floor to defer B. We have some issues with this...
By order, you cannot defer a motion that's not on the floor.
Correct. And I have a motion on recreation entertainment license, U of I rodeo club, Champaign County Fairground Association, 1302 North Cor... Urbana.
I move that we forward this item to the full board without recommendation.
So I get... Where's the second? Richards, Chris. Mr. Keable?
So my only concern with that is the event date, and our county board meeting are so incredibly close. Is this going to be fair to them?
Well, it's up to them to make the proper application. They're the ones who did not, and that's why...
I can see that, yeah.
...we're going to defer it to the county board meeting so that they have a chance to correct that application. Mr. Wyble?
Ms. Bucy, what is the date of the county board meeting?
19.
19. Should be adequate time.
I think the rodeo is the 28th. Well, the sheriff would not approve it. There's some lack of insurance and some other issues that are being corrected as we speak, hopefully. We're rather not going into any further detail, it's not necessary. Okay, all in favor of defer?
By order.
Yeah, we're sending it to the full board, defer. Sorry about that. Okay, all right.
Did we have a vote on that? By order, was there a vote?
I asked for a vote, I said all in favor.
Well, you said defer. I'd like to have a clue.
All in favor of deferral?
By order, we're not deferring that.
Okay. I'm recommending to go to the full board without recommendation.
Aye.
All in favor? All opposed? Okay, motion carries. I'll get that one right, I promise. Okay, we're up to, okay, C, request approval from ELOC to place the draft LISA on the zoning board of appeals agenda for public hearing. I'd like a motion.
So moved.
So moved by Jan, second by John. Before I go into asking for discussion, I want to thank the LISA update committee, personally. They did an extraordinary job working on this, long hours, they're all volunteers, I think they did an exceptional job, and as you'll see, the request, this first, was passed by the LISA committee five to one to bring to the board. I want to thank Patsy Petrie, Steve Mosher, Bruce Stickers, Steve Sterwalt, Deborah Greist, Elizabeth Jones, Kyle Craft, John Hall, and Susan Monti for their efforts on our behalf. Thank you. I'd like to bring up Ms. Deborah Greist?
Greist.
I'm sorry. Please, and she's going to give us a little bit of an overview of what we're voting on tonight.
Okay, well, as many of you know, I'm Deb Greist. I served, I was honored to serve at your request as chairman of the committee to update the site assessment factors, and then subsequently, the land evaluation scoring aspect of the LISA tool. I commend this board for the appointment of well-qualified and very hard-working individuals who possess a significant breadth of knowledge relevant to the use and the impact of the LISA tool. It's important to note that these individuals represented a variety of interests. They held true to the principles of updating the LISA tool to align with current land management principles and appropriate uses in Champaign County, while holding as an overarching objective of reasonable farmland protection and preservation. We had public input from opposing positions and opinions. Although we significantly exceeded our original timeline, I believe we have provided a reasonable update recommendation within the time and economic resources available. The committee had many active discussions that included vetting a wide range of alternatives. They worked hard to update the proposed LISA tool to adhere to the governing law, be easily understandable by the general public, and consistent and objective as an assessment instrument. It is important to note that the LISA is one of several tools intended to assist in making land use decisions. It should be used in conjunction with the Champaign County Land Resource Management Plan and the land use regulations, including the Champaign County zoning ordinance, the Champaign County zoning subdivision regulation, and Champaign County storm water management policy. As a past chair of the ZBA, I can attest that the ZBA depends upon this tool as a fundamental building block in its land use recommendations. I will be first to tell you that no tool has the ability to be perfect, and that all farmland is important. However, we believe that the LISA proposal in front of you is reasonable, effective, and will provide Champaign County officials a systematic and objective tool to use in rating a site or parcel in terms of its agricultural importance. I encourage you to send this proposal to the ZBA where public testimony can be heard. Again, I thank you for the opportunity, and am available for any questions.
Chris.
Thank you for coming and talking to us, Ms. Greist. I don't know, I'd like you to weigh in on this, and I guess I'd like Mr. Hall to weigh in on this as well. Mr. Stenzel during public comments made some, I think extraordinarily well-stated arguments in favor of the idea of whether we are, the question of the extent to which we're validating the new standard against test cases, and seeing how the new standard performs versus the old standard. I'm wondering if you can speak to what you've done along those lines, whether you think that more comparison or more validation is appropriate there, and how we might be able to do that.
Do you like John or I to go first? Okay. I can tell you from a committee's perspective that we heard Mr. Stenzel's concerns. He voiced them routinely and repeatedly. We really believe that all of the sites were reevaluated, utilizing the current tool and compared to the existing tool, and that we are at the point where the next phase of testing would be the real-world testing that would occur in the next couple of years as we utilize the tool, if this board ultimately approves it for use. The committee discussed Mr. Stenzel's concerns extensively, and I don't believe there was anything that was within our power to resolve his concerns.
I just want to add that your staff worked many weekends to ensure that this instrument was tested completely before it came to you. And so what Chair Greist said is absolutely true. The committee worked very hard, and your staff worked even harder to ensure that. I myself spent many hours replying to Mr. Stenzel's comments. I have to say, Mr. Stenzel takes a lot of time in asking questions, and sometimes it was a challenge to respond, but I really don't think it was fair to say we ignored his comments. And again, the committee went out of their way every meeting, as far as I was concerned, to hear comments and address them the best they could.
And if I could have a follow-up, my intent is not to, in any way, you know, impute the work that the committee did. I understand a lot of effort went into this. My question is more along the lines of, you know, what Mr. Stenzel's comments made me think about was more, you know, when you have an instrument like this, it's been in place for 20 years, at least, and it's changing, right? There at some point has to be a point at which you jump from one ship to the other. And I'm curious to know how we manage that, how we can manage that transition effectively, so if there are unintended consequences of the changes, we can remedy them within the next 20 years, you know, before we have to, before we have to live with this thing forever.
You know, the existing LISA was adopted in 1984 and recommended a review within two years.
How are we doing on that?
As far as I know, that review never happened.
I think there was a zero after the two.
I do think you should review how well this LISA is working, but if you adopt it, I encourage you to adopt it completely.
Can you elaborate on that?
Adopt it, and you could even include a provision for a review in two years if you want. I do think you should make sure that happens, and after that, I think you should revisit it on a basis that is regular and shorter than the almost 30 years that this LISA existed. I would agree with that wholeheartedly.
Okay, thank you for your comment.
I would concur with Mr. Hall's comments.
There were 15 sites, correct? 15 sites that were tested.
Correct. We originally started with more sites, but we found that some were duplicative of others, so we found no variance between them, so we focused on 15 diverse sites that we felt as a committee, and that staff felt as our trained representatives, represented the breadth of the typical types of diversity we're going to see in the sites. There may be some minor variations, but they're so site-specific without having those individual sites come forward, there's no effective means to test those sites that we've not seen.
Thank you. Mr. Langenhart.
It would appear that this committee has done its job. It's listened to all of the arguments presented by Mr. Stenzel, and in due deliberation, has rejected them. If you think that Mr. Stenzel's suggestions were appropriate, I think it's incumbent upon critics of this committee to bring specifics up with regard to those, just what is wrong with this committee's report, and how does Mr. Stenzel's suggestions take a superior position.
Mr. Wyble, then, Ms. Per.
Caution free there, Mr. Greist, Mr. Hall. I realize the changes have here, but on the average, how often would this, would LISA be used? Are we talking 10 times a month, five times a month, or just top the heads?
John, you want to speak to that, because it's used in more than, it's used in multiple situations.
I understand that, yeah.
It would be very rare for LISA to be used more than once a month, because that's principally in a rezoning. We usually don't get 12, more than 12 rezonings in a year, so.
Okay, part of making, it's going to take a while to really get backlog of information to say, to evaluate it.
Good point. In the past year, there have been maybe four rezonings for all 12 months.
I guess I would add that the committee discussed at length what types of measures were available to staff and the board in the event there was some glaring factor that required a modification that had not been considered. And there is always the option for staff, the ZBA, or any other department to make a recommendation for an, a minor or a major adjustment to this, if there is a critical flaw that is detected after it's adopted. So it can come back to this board at any time, without waiting for a specified period, if a glaring error were to be able to be identified. The committee worked hard to try and troubleshoot and be forward-looking in the possibilities of what could go wrong, and I believe that we, we thought we had done everything we could do at this point in time. Again, there's no tool that's perfect. We're not proposing that this is perfect, but we do think it's a quality instrument to consider and move forward with.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Greist? What's the motion?
I want to say that in the last 28 years, that we've seen huge improvements in the way soils are classified in this state. We've seen huge improvements in productivity, and I think this is going to give us a tool to say that a farm by Penfield, Illinois isn't as good as one at Broadlands. And I like the way they classified these soils in this report, because they do recognize the top four in this county, and it's not just going to be a letter from Soil Conservation that says this is prime farmland from one end to the other, because it isn't. And it recognizes areas that it's going to be a tool that we can use to say, "We want to save this," and maybe that one isn't quite worth the salt. It just refined the system that was antiquated when they approved this, 1984, because all we had was an old soil map with general classifications on it, and now the supervisor of assessments can pull up a piece of property and tell you what's in it, and what percentage of it's what, and where it belongs in this table from the top to the bottom. And we didn't have that all the way through the 80s and the 90s, and even into the first part of this century. And it's refined this process to a point, I think, this is about as good as you can get, as far as classification, and it gives us a much better indication of what really is out there, and just saying it's prime, because it's not all prime, it's prime plus one, two, three, and we recognize that. And I don't think this thing was designed to keep every acre in this county from having a house built on it, because there are definitely places that are better than others for houses, they just don't happen to be where the best land is.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Any other discussion, Ms. Anderson?
Hearing Ms. Greist talk about the possibility of it coming back at any time, if there were a glaring flaw, it would seem like that is a safeguard. But would either of you, you mentioned that before they said two years, two years seems awfully quick. Would something like five years for review be more reasonable, or would you have, either one of you have any thoughts on that?
I don't think two years is unreasonable, but with the current economic situation, two years is not going to be that many tests. But I can't stress enough how big of a change this LISA is. It is a dramatic change. I think you deserve to know how it's going. I'll let you know anytime there appears to be a critical problem, but I don't think an update in two years is at all unreasonable, given the really big change that this LISA has. I mean, I think it's a good change. I personally have no doubts, but I do know that nobody has perfect knowledge, and you deserve to know. And I think even for no other reason than just to get you in the habit of reviewing it. If we wait five years, my goodness, five years is a long time from now.
I would agree with what John said.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, Ms. Petrie.
Yes, I'd like to pull back to what Mr. Langenhamb suggested or implied, and that is to explore how is there an opportunity for those outside the county board and outside the LISA update committee to submit any suggestions, or to, as Mr. Alex mentioned, be very specific, more specif, I should say, more specific in to back the comments that are made, whether it's here or whether it's at the ZBA, so that then it gets folded back to the county board in a concrete way. I expressed in caucus, I expressed at the LISA update committee, that I'm not sure the best process is for us to send it to the ZBA before the county board really has a chance to wrap their mutual heads around all these changes, which, as John Hall has just mentioned, is very significant, before we send it to the ZBA, and because then it goes into public hearing, and the county board members cannot talk before the ZBA. And so I wonder if it's a better process that we really discuss it here, full-blown discussion here, before we send it to the ZBA, and then that might give the chance for the public to have more input.
Mr. Wyble.
Well, I point out that for members of the public, they should certainly attend the ZBA, it's a public hearing, that is exactly what it's for, so they should take advantage of that. As far as discussion, I mean, what is a full-blown discussion? The county board can discuss as much as they want, certainly this is an opportunity, so why hold things back? If you have something to say, do it.
Mr. Sherwood.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd also like to remind those that are watching and listening, too, that, that the meetings that the commission held were public, notified meetings, they were open to the public, they were open for public comment at the beginning of the sessions, and, and there was definitely, those individuals showed up, myself showed up to at least two or three of them, and at every one that I showed up to, there was transparency, and there was an opportunity for anyone that came to give any kind of comment they wanted.
Wait a minute, Mr. Langen. Mr. Hall, the field. You have not spoken on the issue yet.
I haven't, and I'd like to call the question.
Call the question. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
By order, the board was on to call the question.
Okay. We now call the question. Thank you, Mr. Wyble. I request for approval for ELOC to be sent the draft LISA to the zoning board of appeals. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. And second, D, request approval from ELOC to be sent the draft LISA to the zoning board And second, D, request approval from ELOC to place a proposed zoning ordinance amendment changing the definition of best prime farmland on the zoning board of appeals agenda for a public hearing. Motion? Mr. Mosher, second. Mr. Mitchell? Any discussion? This is all part and parcel of the LISA program. Carol?
I, I just wanted to get a, I don't understand why that is separate from the LISA draft.
I'm the bus motion, but I didn't. It's all part of this. John, would you please?
Well, we just listed them separately because they're really quite different things. The LISA update is a new LISA with new site assessment factors and a new LE analysis. The best prime farmland is something that is unique to your zoning ordinance only and your LRMP. It's not, it is mentioned in LISA, but it really comes from your LRMP and your zoning ordinance. I would recommend that the board, that these two items go together to the ZBA. That way citizens can make testimony on both because they are, they are very interrelated, but they're completely separate also.
Okay.
The LISA committee voted unanimously.
The LISA committee voted unanimously on the, on the best prime farmland recommendation. That's right.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we're up to monthly report. You have a monthly report on your desk for March. Lack of motion to, so move. Mr. Langenham, second. Ms. Ammons, any discussion on the report? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We don't have any other business as far as I know. And.
Chair, can I make a recommendation that we move that microphone bias as usual up front? Because I can hear him real good tonight.
That's a better microphone?
We'll work on that.
We have what, only A?
Do I sound like Mr. J?
Yes.
Only A goes to the consent agenda.
It's not a K?
Oh, no, that goes straight to the ZBA, I'm sorry. No, the A does.
A goes consent agenda.
Right, yeah. Yes, it does. Yes, it does, Jim.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chris. Next up is Highway, Ms. Covert?
For the grant, for the grant, pause, pause on. If there was 100%.
Good evening. The first order of business for the Highway and Transportation Committee is that county and township motor fuel tax claim for March 2012. And moved in second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Next, we'll go into the county engineer's report. And John Cooper will be sitting here for the county engineer.
Good evening. The first one is for a bridge replacement in Cretinen. The project was let on the 29th. And I provided some bid tabs there to show you what, what the numbers were.
Move approval?
They moved in second, it's open for discussion. Alex?
Just one question, how old's the current structure?
Honestly, I don't know. I mean, I know that it's, let's see, this one is. It's, it's, it's 20-plus, but the problem wasn't so much the, the age as the deterioration. I mean, most of it underneath is falling down to a point where we've got the bridge section off so that you can only take a certain load over it.
So it's already weight restricted?
Yes.
Thanks.
The second one is repair. I'm sorry.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Aye.
Sorry about that. The next one is for repair of a, of a covert up on, up on County Highway 22, which is south of Penfield. We had the project was led on the 29th. And the bid tabs again are enclosed.
They moved in second, it's open for discussion. Seeing no discussion, all in.
No, go ahead, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Aye.
C was the resolution for the, for materials for the townships. That was also led on the, on the 29th. We had, the tabulations are enclosed within the pamphlet, I think.
Second.
They moved in second, is it open for discussion? It's been let.
The project left March 29th. Isn't this, something like that?
Yes.
I'm just questioning, why, why do we have to approve something we've already set?
Well, we have, excuse me, we haven't accepted, I mean, the, the bid itself has been, been done, but we haven't accepted anything till we get approval. They're sitting on, on the desk right now, waiting for approval. Once they're approved, then they would go forward. Yes.
Okay, Carol Ammon?
Yeah, I think I'm a little, so the, we're looking at the paper that was on the desk tonight, not what was in the packet, right?
Yes, I added, for which one, I'm sorry.
This is the resolution for the, I can't even, by, by, how do you say that word?
Bytimis.
Bytimis. Materials, this is the, this was on our desk tonight, right? This resolution.
Well, there's, it was, like I say, it was a letting on the 29th, so he probably did have, probably was.
Is there a reason why we didn't get this in the packet before so we would have time to look at this? I don't even know what bytimis is.
That one was included in my packet. I did not, I add that to, to anything. The only thing I brought in.
Is there changes on this while we had it on the desk instead?
Only that the letting was on March 29th and we prepared your agendas and mailed them on March 29th, so it crossed over in terms of timing.
Okay, Mr. Maxwell.
Hi, John. Could you tell us what the, how the bids came out with respect to engineer's estimate?
Let's find the sheet. Just a second, I've got the sheets here. You'll notice that there's various numbers. I mean, it's based on the type of oil. There's like seven or eight different types of oil, so you're gonna get a difference in price. Unless I can find, unless I go back to the office and get each individual one, I can't really tell you the difference. We're probably within, you know, at least dime, nickel or dime of each one. It didn't change that much.
No major surprises then?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Aye.
D is a. D. Well. Sorry about that. I saw E. And it's for speed limit ordinance. We did a speed study. We were asked to do a speed study on Tin Cup Road. And it was normally, I guess that's set at 55. And all the, the roads around it were set at 40. And went after a speed study, it showed that that was, should be 40 also. So we're asking for approval for that.
Okay, Alex?
Is a speed study just an engineering matter of looking at, you know, intersection configuration and things? Or do you actually go out there and measure average speeds of vehicles?
We actually have speed counters that we set out. And we do a 24-hour count. And we pick a four, three, two-hour period within that, within the high-low on both, in the morning and afternoon. And then taking considerations, all the entrances, driveways, and everything else. So, and we, throughout the high, throughout the low.
Thank you.
Okay, bias that you want to say anything?
I would concur, you know, I've been on that road. It's a relatively short road, there's lots of driveways, you know, residential traffic. And 55 is certainly too fast.
Sally? I mean, Stephanie?
That's okay, I've been called worse. I absolutely support this speed limit change on that particular road because it is a very smooth road. And when people start going 55 miles an hour, there are, there are children that are in the area. There are businesses as well as it is a residential area. So anything we can do to reduce the speeds. On Prairie View Road, not too far from this particular area, there was a skateboarder that was killed. And so we did reduce the speed on Prairie View Road. And so I think it's just a, a safety factor for kids that are bicycling and on those, near those roadways. So I'd very much like for all of you to support the reduction in speed.
Stan?
Did you call me?
Yes, I did.
Well, I, my question's been answered. I guess 55 is too fast, I'll slow down. Thank you.
Okay, Al?
It's very similar to what we did on 50, on Minas Bello Road at I-57 when we lowered the speed limit there. It resulted in zero accidents since that time. So I certainly support the lowering of the speed limit, especially in areas that have driveways.
Any more discussion? Lord?
Don't the states still approve of these speed limits? I know they used to.
Well, these are on county roads, so this is on us to get approval by the county board. Not, not for our roads, no. No, sir.
Who did tell them? We do?
I'm sorry.
Who does the?
We do the study ourselves. We have the study in hand. If you want to see it, I can, I can show it to you. It's about this thick.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
And the last one's F. It's a resolution authorizing the chair to sign a joint agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation for replacement of a structure on County Highway 16, St. Mary's Road. It's a bridge about a mile and a half west of Route 130 and about four mi, four and a half miles east of Posotum. It's a bridge that's also been staged down for lowering, the traffic itself has, has been lowered quite a bit on that one also as far as weight limits.
Second.
They moved in second. Any discussion? Jonathan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That, that particular bridge is, I think, John's got to be at least 30 years old, at least. And it's, it's downgraded what it can handle right now. It's a very important particular road. That road comes right off I-57 exit at Posotum. And it feeds right into 130. And 130 up, you can go either way. South, you'd hit 36. And of course, north, you can get into 150 and Route 74. It's, it's a pretty good artery for the county. And also too, the state police use it quite often. So I always watch Mr. James's speed when he comes down there too. Thanks.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, Steve O'Callaghan?
What all exactly was downgrading it? John, was it too narrow in addition to?
And again, this is another one of those bridges that was starting to lose a lot underneath. It was starting to, the rebars were starting to show. And the weight, it was actually looked at by Springfield, the I.D.A., the engineers of Springfield. And they downgraded it for us. And we, we started ourselves, but they came over and said, you know, it's gonna, you're gonna have to do this or close it, so.
It was basically ruined by salt perhaps?
Mostly salt, yes, sir. And the fact that it's, it's got a real, a weird configuration in, in the way that the channel flows under it. It's three-span and it's, it's just got a way, the water's flowing in, it's just causing more problems on, well, not only the bridge, except for the piers too.
Piers are in a little bit of an offset.
Yes, sir.
Right. I could tell you exactly when it was built because I won a bet off the superintendent when my second son was born that he was gonna be a boy. And that was in 1970.
So you know more behind than how old it is then.
Patsy?
I, I don't see any costs on this resolution. What is going to be the cost for this?
I don't have the, the estimate on it, but I'm, I'm trying to remember. But it's gonna be federally, mostly federally funded. So I'm thinking it's gonna be 70, 80% federally funded. Then our, our share is at 15, 20%. I'm not sure what it is though. I'd have to check. It looks like it's 1.5. That's just in the book there. 1.5.
72.
290 for us, 290 for us, and 1.1 for the state.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Alex?
Just one quick question. Who does the engineering on the new bridge? Is it us or is it the state?
On the new bridges? No, we hire a, we hire a consultant to do that.
So we'll actually do the engineering on the replacement?
We do all, we do all our engineering.
Even though the state's paying for most of it, we're doing the engineering?
We send our guys out to, to resident engineer, not to actually design it. Design is through a structural engineer of consultants.
Okay, but we're the, we're the agency.
We're, yes, sir.
And they're gonna move the bridge farther to the west, to the center of the channel, and more to the bridge?
Yes, it's gonna move that way a little bit, yeah.
Thanks.
Was that us? Patsy?
Doesn't it seem appropriate that the amount should be in this resolution before we approve it? But it's not in the resolution. You're authorizing signature of the agreement, which you have, and it's documented in the agreement. I think so, yeah.
I think part of this is what's going on is that, the way the letting's coming up on this is that I think that when the letting is for this bridge comes up, there's such a time lapse between when the, when it's let and when we can get approval. He's asking for approval ahead of time so that when we do get it, we can get started and it won't be one of those bridges that has to carry over to the next session if we, if that's, if that's the case.
Stan?
All the question?
Yes. Okay. Any discussion on calling the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? I'll go back to the main motion. The adoption of the resolution. So all in favor of that?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, the chair doesn't have the report.
Can I ask a question of the gentleman up there?
Yes.
What's the status on the bridge on North Maplewood? I'd rant to him.
We, we were, we were just, we're basically 95, 96% complete. The problem was the fact that the asphalt plants were not opening. And that's what we had left. We had approach slabs, I'm sorry, asphalt for the approaches that we needed. And until, until that opened, we couldn't do anything. And they supposed-
Okay, guys?
Madam Chair, I can't remember whether this was at caucus before the county board meeting or actually during the county board meeting, but I believe two weeks ago we asked about having a resolution or an agenda item against the roundabout on North Lincoln Avenue. Okay?
We're going to do that next month. Mr. Blue's out of town, and so we'll plan on having that next month.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to designate it on the consent agenda, there'd be B, C, and D.
I think there was a no vote there, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, E and F for me on the consent agenda.
Carol voted no on the first two.
On which one?
B and C.
Okay, B, C, and D she voted on, no.
B and D, sorry.
Okay. So the consent agenda, B, E, and F.
I think it was called as the other business. Yeah, let's adjourn and go home.